Do we have any citizens or public comments? Welcome, everybody. Consideration of approval of the agenda.
Some move, Your Honor.
Second.
Clerk, call the roll.
Starr.
Aye.
Jaeger.
Aye.
Friesman.
Aye.
Hammond.
Aye.
Malero.
Aye.
Agenda is approved as submitted. Consideration of approval of the minutes of the April 13 meeting. Any questions or discussion? The move.
Second.
Clerk, call the roll.
Jaeger.
Aye.
Friesman.
Aye.
Hammond.
Aye.
Malero.
Aye.
Starr.
Aye.
Minutes of the April 13 meeting are approved. Consideration of approval of the consent calendar. Any questions regarding the consent calendar?
Some move. Second.
Clerk, call the roll.
Friesman.
Aye.
Hammond.
Aye.
Malero.
Aye.
Starr.
Aye.
Jaeger.
Consent calendar is approved as submitted. Business of the mayor. We have several proclamations. The first of which is to stamp out hunger. Can you step forward and give us your name and what your request is?
Good evening. My name is Jim Sanner. I'm here on behalf of the local union and post office. It's that time of year again. We're having our local food drive this Saturday. So, I'm here to ask for your support in the way of a proclamation. Compliments to Trudy. Please.
Any questions regarding this particular proclamation?
How much food do you normally collect, Jim?
Usually it's right around a couple tons.
Couple tons.
Wow.
That's good.
It's been trending down maybe the last few years. But it's usually right around 4,000 pounds or thereabouts.
That's a very worthwhile project. Thank you for doing that.
Yes, it is.
How do you coordinate that with the local food bank or whatever?
We are in touch, of course, with Debbie Lincoln. She's in charge of the Messiah pantry here. So, we coordinate back and forth. They'll have a group of volunteers, as will we, canvassing neighborhoods and shuttling to and from. So, it'll be a busy day here through the morning and afternoon Saturday. It's a team effort, definitely.
Does all the food stay with the food bank or does it get just...
Yes, it all stays local.
All will be consumed here in Charles City?
Mm-hmm.
Or Floyd County? Or the area that they serve?
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
You guys.
We'll be with you in a minute. Next up is the proclamation for the National Day of Prayer. We have somebody here from that organization.
I don't know what happened to her.
Well, we had a request and I believe that was followed up by a contact with a clerk who collaborated with them in bringing up with this particular proclamation.
Yep. I sent it to her and she tweaked a little bit and sent it back, so...
She doesn't appear to have any controversial aspects to it. It's pretty straightforward. So, I would submit it to... For consideration, I'll read it while I'm down there doing the other reading and go from there. If you approve.
I'd so move for both proclamations, Your Honor.
Second. Clerk, call the roll.
Hammond.
Aye.
Malero.
Aye.
Starr.
Aye.
Jaeger.
Aye.
Friesman.
Aye.
Okay, the proclamations are approved. I'll come down and read the proclamation.
Did you talk to Gene Hall?
I've seen him christenated. Whereas, every year on the second Saturday in May, letter carriers across the country collect non-perishable food as part of the nation's largest one-day food drive, distributing the donations to local food banks. And whereas the Letter Carrier Stamp Out Hunger Food Drive is just one example of how letter carriers work to make a difference in the lives of those they serve. Since the pilot drive was held in 1991, more than one... A billion pounds of food have been collected. And whereas we would like to recognize all letter carriers for their hard work and their commitment to their communities, all of the food collected in our community stays in our community, and we support carriers' efforts to help those in need in our community. Now therefore, I, James A. Ir, Mayor of Charles City, Iowa, do hereby proclaim Saturday, May 9, 2015, as Letter Carrier's Food Drive Day in Charles City and encourage the citizens of our community to support the food drive by placing non-perishable food items in or near your mailbox on Food Drive Day. Your letter carrier will pick it up while delivering the mail, and together we can all help those in need. And witness whereof I have hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the Charles... City of Charles City to be affixed this fourth day of May, 2015. Signed by myself. Do you put this out on the radio? All of that? So, our citizens will all get several reminders to do it. It's easy to forget this if you don't know it soon after that. Well, thank you very much for all you do. You make a difference. We obviously have a need here that is major because all the reports we get is it's an ongoing matter. So, thank you very much for doing what you do. Well, while I'm at it, I'll read this proclamation. Whereas prayer is a fundamental part of our nation's heritage, with the first National Day of Prayer proclaimed by the Continental Congress in 1775. And whereas the National Day of Prayer was revived as an annual observance in 1952, has become a great unifying force for citizens from a diverse number of religious backgrounds. And whereas every level of government in every state of the United States has fervently sought divine guidance as we charted what has now become American history. Now therefore, I, James A. Ir, Mayor of Charles City, Iowa, by the request of the local pastors and by vote of support by the city council of Charles City, Iowa, do hereby proclaim Thursday, May 7, 2015, to be a citywide day of prayer in Charles City and call upon each citizen to recognize this day in his or her own way. Signed by myself as Mayor of Charles City.
Amen.
I believe it's Central Park on Thursday, the 7th. And I'm not going to be here. I'm going to be out of town along with the city administrator to the SMART Conference for the Economic Developers of Iowa. I believe the mayor pro tem may be available to read that at this particular occasion. And naturally, the sentiment of the proclamation is something we all support. Next up, consideration of requests from community revitalization for farmers' market.
Kim Gerber from the Charles City Community Revitalization requesting use of Central Park for farmers' market, which I do have scheduled to begin this Saturday at 9:00 and will run until noon. I have things set up for every Friday and Wednesday. I have people taking care and being the market master for those times. I've got some fun events and specials that will be introduced this year, some that are old and some that are new. Do you guys have any questions?
Are there any special events? Things that have changed?
Yes. I have people contacting me. Kim Dugan, I can't remember her married name. She's actually going to be introducing yoga in the park during a couple of these farmers' markets, free of charge, just so people can see what yoga is about. And so, it's just fun getting people out into the park. I have friends of the library coming and doing reading with youngsters that they've done every year since I have been in charge of the market. And they just get together and pull in all of the kids that are around and have some of the retired teachers and whatnot read stories in the book. And let's see, not this Saturday, but the next Saturday, actually. I think Trudy is going to get a phone call from Mrs. McGregor. That would be the 16th. We have what I'm calling planting with youngsters that's coming through some money that was made available. And Kathy has gotten a certain amount. We're going to be inviting a certain amount of youth to come down and do some planting during farmers' market. So, they'll get to take home some planters with lettuce, I think, and then some fresh herbs, along with recipes and instructions on how to do it. So, we're incorporating involving parents or guardian along with the children, along with volunteers, to do this while the market is actually going on. So, we're trying to make it more family-friendly, something to do while you're in the park, not just shop, which is great, local, eating healthy and all of that, but then also making it something a little bit more fun for the whole family.
If you have anything involving horses, the clerk is always happy to do that.
I love how you just love volunteering her for things. She's very awesome. We love her.
Other questions?
Some move, Your Honor.
Second.
Clerk, call the roll.
Malero.
Aye.
Starr.
Aye.
Jaeger.
Aye.
Friesman.
Aye.
Hammond.
Aye.
Your request is approved.
Thank you.
Thanks, Detective.
I look forward to seeing all of you at the market Saturday where you can buy Mother's Day gifts.
If any of these guys show up to do yoga, let me know and I'll be there to watch.
I know.
I heard you were leading it, Delaney. No.
Not me. That's why I'll come and watch.
Consideration of Resolution 67-15, approving preliminary plans and set date for a letting and public hearing on housing 2015 Capital Improvement Project 14-120A.
Heidi Nielsen, Housing Director. Is it okay if we discuss both the next two in general terms and then split them up and...
They are related, so...
Yes, okay. For the last several months, we've been working with Wagner and Weineger Architects to prepare plans and bid documents for our 2015 Capital Improvement Projects. Unfortunately, we did not receive any bids, so we've decided to split those projects into three separate projects. The first two projects are presented tonight. The third project, we're going to wait until winter because most of the work is inside. And that's just doing some alterations to the units to make them ADA compliant. The first project that we have deals with... I can't remember which is which. The addition and replacement of handrails and some concrete work at all three sites, North Cedar Terrace, South Cedar Terrace, and Morningside Apartments. The Housing Board has reviewed all the plans and they have approved the plans and cost estimates, and they do recommend approval. Pending approval of the bid, the bid documents will be issued on May 7, and the bids will be due June 1, and the public hearing is set for June 15.
Do the architects feel that by doing this, we'll have a better chance of getting somebody to bid?
Yeah, because the contracts won't be quite as large. And some of the contractors, you know, just were too busy this summer to handle a project as large as that.
Okay. What are you looking for as far as starting and ending time?
Starting time would be as soon as we hold the pre-construction after the bid award, which would be June 15. And then there's two different dates. The handrails is extended to the end of October for the completion date. And then the siding with the painting, which is the next, would be for the middle of October completion date.
Other questions regarding this first resolution?
I'd so move for 67-15.
Second.
Clerk, call the roll.
Starr.
Aye.
Jaeger.
Aye.
Friesman.
Aye.
Hammond.
Aye.
Malero.
Aye.
Resolution 67-15 is approved. Consideration of Resolution 68-15, approving preliminary plans and set date for a letting and public hearing on housing 2015 Capital Improvement Project 14-120B. Discussion.
Okay. This project is putting... Replacing the siding at Morningside Apartments and then also painting the window trim at North Cedar Terrace in units 81 through 128. It's pretty much the same thing, Wagner and Weineger. We've worked with them, and the board has approved the cost estimates and the plans and are ready to just get started with this one also.
Questions regarding this resolution?
I'd so move for 68-15.
Clerk, call the roll.
Jaeger.
Aye.
Friesman.
Aye.
Hammond.
Aye.
Malero.
Aye.
Starr.
Aye.
Resolution 68-15 is approved. Consideration of motion setting date of public hearing on fiscal year 2015 budget amendment. Discussion.
Budget amendments, if one is required, are required by the state to be done by May 31st. You have to follow the same procedures as you do for the budget, so you have to set a date for a public hearing and publish notice, not less than 10 nor more than 20 days prior. So, we've selected May 18th for the hearing. I've prepared the notice that will go into the paper, and this follows the same format as the normal budget forms that you see every year in March. It has all the income, the revenues up on the top. And then at the bottom, they're divided out by program. You're only required to amend your budget if you're going to go over on your expenses. If you're going to go over on your revenues or be under on your revenues, the state doesn't care. But we are going over or under on some of our programs down below, so that's the main reason why we're amending. At the bottom, we have to list out some of the reasons why we're amending. Some of our reasons are the purchase of the land for the McQuillan project. For the housing funds, we had to put those onto a separate checking account, so that included transfers out into another checking account. So, that's another one of the reasons we have to amend. We received a Fit for Life grant, which is part of that money that's going to the farmers' market for the kids' containers. So, we had to... It's not so much the money coming in, like I said, but the expenses going out for it. That's the reason that we have to amend. There was a change in timeline for some of our projects that we're doing. The UV disinfection, the library project, the repairs over there. There were some salaries that did not get budgeted from last year, so we're correcting that error. We put in some LED lights, replaced a boiler, and replaced some doors out at CVTC. We got a new copier for the foster grandparents. And Riverside Tiff, we're working on some adjustments to that fund, and so I made an amendment for the worst-case scenario on that one. I continue to work on that, to find out that adjustment. As far as revenues, most of it was increase in grant receipts, foster grandparents, increase in the road use tax that we're getting in, the rehab grant got moved back from last year to this year. That's the big bulk of it, all the reasons why we need to amend. So, all those numbers are here in front of you.
Questions or discussion? Clerk, call the roll.
Friesman.
Aye.
Hammond.
Aye.
Malero.
Aye.
Starr.
Aye.
Jaeger.
Aye.
The motion is approved. Consideration of Resolution 69-15, approving crack ceiling contract with Bargain. Discussion.
Yes, Dirk and I, we've been discussing some asphalt pavement maintenance on our newer asphalt overlays, particularly on Gilbert Street and Clark Street. In 2013, Clark Street was overlaid from Lake Shore... Lake Shore Drive to the east city limits. And in 2011, Gilbert Street was overlaid from best budget into the west city limits. The one on Gilbert Street, that was actually done in conjunction with a county project, and the county continued the overlay out into the county. We've met with a representative from Bargain Incorporated on their services. They also have a pavement sealer called Replay, and it's an agricultural-based oil. It's made from soybeans, and it's much more environmentally friendly than a petroleum-based sealant. Routing and sealing cracks in the pavement ceiling, it's an important part of pavement management. It keeps the water out of the pavement and keeps the oil in, particularly with asphalt overlays. When the oil leaves the pavement, it becomes brittle and cracks and just accelerates deterioration. If you can keep that oil in, it remains flexible and will have longer life. In addition to those two streets, also the Housing Authority's parking lot over at South Cedar Terrace, that needs to be sealed and routes cracked... The cracks routed and sealed as well. Bargain's quote for the work, $49,991.07. And this breaks down to approximately $28,700 for Gilbert Street, almost $20,000 for Clark Street, and a little over $1,500 for the Housing Department's parking lot. So, we'd recommend resolution... Approval of Resolution 69-15, approving the proposal from Bargain Incorporated.
Any further discussion?
Now, have you seen any of this replay in action or examples of it to see how it's been used and how it's held up at all, or is this relatively new?
Not personally. We've seen through videos. Also, I do want to add to on the... It'll be interesting to watch the Gilbert Street phase of this because, like as I mentioned, the overlay was done simultaneously with the county's project. The county is not doing this, so it'll be a side-by-side comparison. So, we'll actually be able to watch this and see the effects that this replay will have on the pavement maintenance. Is Dirk familiar with any place that this has been used or talked to any of the other maintenance people where it has been used? Not that I know of, no. Not that... We've not personally talked to them, no.
Further discussion or questions?
What's the projection of the increase in life of the asphalt over this process?
Well, generally asphalt overlays will last 10 to 15 years. But being able to keep the water out and keep the oil in, it'll just add to that longevity. I don't have it a number of years.
A number, okay.
We did something similar in a previous community where we would over some asphalt streets, actually some sealco portions, where we'd use a material very similar to this where you sprayed it on it. And I know the street crew there was a firm believer in that it helped extend the life of that road. And so, we did it on a regular basis, almost on an annual basis in some areas. So, I think it's a similar product. So, it... We'll be able to answer that question directly in a few years here because we're doing a direct test, like John was pointing out.
Get a live study on the project.
Yeah.
So, what Iowa winters are not too friendly on asphalt. So, anything we can do to help keep the moisture out, I think, is, you know, a good idea.
The funding source of this is out of our road use tax?
Road use, as well as housing.
Oh, yeah, housing portion. Get heavy on the housing.
Most of them are housing.
Other questions or discussion?
Some move.
Clerk, call the roll.
Hammond.
Aye.
Malero.
Aye.
Excuse me. Starr.
Aye.
Jaeger.
Aye.
Friesman.
Aye.
Resolution 69-15 is approved. Consideration of unfinished business. Consideration of new business. Hearing none. Miscellaneous correspondence.
We did get a letter, and I... It's not in my folder. I don't know where it went, from the community chamber down here. It's time to do the annual parking lot cleaning that the city council is so gracious to do every year. So, this week or next week, we will need to get you guys together to get a night that will work and get the parking lot cleaned.
If we're resurfacing this down here, do we need to work on that one, too? Can we just... Can we skip that in this year for...
In front of the bid, actually.
Right.
Sweep up those bits and pieces.
I don't... If you want to go down to clean that lot, have at it. I don't think we normally do that, Michael.
So, but that's the only correspondence that I have to share, so...
City attorneys report.
The only point of interest, we're looking at a Iowa Supreme Court opinion that came down a couple weeks ago that seemed to indicate that cities, if they prosecute people under their simple misdemeanors, which we've been doing, may be required to appoint attorneys to represent defendants in all of those cases. And that would be a serious drain on city finances. So, we're looking at all... At responses to that. I was told today that Dubuque has eliminated jail as a penalty on any of their simple misdemeanors because that's the triggering mechanism, is the possibility of a jail sentence. So, we'll look at that and report back because we may need to amend our code again.
Again. I was just going to say again.
Is that something that could be on a case-by-case basis?
No. No, it's... What happened is somebody was prosecuted on a simple misdemeanor and they were convicted, not jailed, received no jail time. They received a fine. But then on their third offense, that first conviction on a simple misdemeanor was used to escalate the penalty as a three strikes and you're out type law. And the court said, "Well, the fact you didn't have an attorney on that first charge presents a problem." And using that to escalate the penalty on the third charge. Moreover, as I understand it, we think that if there's any possibility of a jail sentence, that you have to have an attorney appointed. Well, we haven't asked for a jail sentence, nor has one been given for years and years. But the very fact it can be, they're saying, causes us to have to appoint an attorney for every charge. So, two immediate solutions suggest themselves. One is to remove jail penalty as a penalty for simple misdemeanors written by the city. The second would be to prosecute all our charges as municipal infractions, which are civil charges, not criminal. So, we're looking at... We're looking at the opinion, and obviously there'll be chatter and talk among the municipal attorneys on this. So, stay tuned.
Okay. Thank you. City clerks report.
The planning session will be May 13 at 7:00 PM, and I will not be here because my daughter has baccalaureate that night, so I will be crying at her ceremony, so...
That's it?
Yeah.
I may not be here either.
City administrators report.
Yeah, just a few things. Working with Poldon right now, discussing possible refinance...
Working with Paul Donner right now, discussing a possible refinance of our 2009 Permeable Paver GO loan, so I'll be meeting with the finance committee to talk through that a little bit, but looking at refinancing that, as well as wrapping in our anticipated general obligation loan for the water projects that we've got coming up here for this next year, so we'll be working on that here shortly. Tomorrow, we've got the new energy director from the Iowa Economic Development Authority coming to town. They'll be here about 1:45. Prior to that, they're going to be in West Union and then coming to Charles City to check out the permeable paving, the McQuillan Place Project, and Parkside, so it'll be fun to have him in town and show them what we're doing.
But he's going to come here first?
He's going to come here second. I believe, I believe he's going to West Union first.
But, City Hall.
He's going to be coming to Victory Park, is where we've...
You're meeting him at City...
We're meeting him at Victory Park at approximately 1:40, 1:45, going from there, so. As the mayor mentioned, we, he and I will be attending the Economic Development Conference this Thursday, the SMART Conference, so hoping they'll pick up on some things. Comprehensive plan, working on that, been coordinating, getting our local committee members put together and confirming their volunteer efforts, so that's moving forward. Hope to be having our first local meeting with that here, probably in, in early June, so, so stay tuned for that. Working with Mark Wicks on the potential lease of our, our tubes and life jackets. As you recall, last year, we purchased about 12 tubes for going down the river. We leased them out last year with an option to purchase, which was not exercised, and so this year, we have a business in town that's interested in, once again, renting them, and, and I just got an update from, from Mark Wicks, and he had met with, met with him this afternoon, and they're, they're interested in doing it, and so hopefully, the council's interested in what I've put together, so we'll be looking at that at our next workshop to see about that. We're doing another lease of the tubes, just a flat fee lease, and with the option to purchase again at the end of the year. I'm getting a number of phone calls on the recently discussed dog issue, so thank you for everybody that's called in or emailed with their thoughts on the topic. I know our committee is going to be meeting initially here this week to discuss, and so we may be discussing it further at the next workshop. It's hard to say if we'll be ready by then or not, but just stay tuned on that issue. Our police chief applications were due this last Friday, and we received a total of 15 applications, so we'll be going through those and coming up with our top candidates, and those top candidates will be invited to the assessment day, which we will be holding here at City Hall on June 13. And lastly, the community gardens, if you haven't been by there lately, the garden bunks are taking shape, and there's a big pile of dirt there that was donated by Allied, and as well as there's a large water container that's been acquired, and possibly partially donated by the manufacturer employed that makes them, so that's coming together as well.
And I was there about 6:30, and Winnie Johnson in her full, full bib gear, getting the beds ready, just looking really good.
Yeah, Trudy, Trudy has pictures to share that we were sent of the bunks being put together in action, so if you're interested, just let us know.
You got a horse stable there, too?
A horse table? Horse stable? Yeah. Not yet.
You actually want to bring my horses down here, don't you?
I probably need to go by the horseshoe pit, so that's further down.
Yeah.
All right, that's all I have.
Okay. Board Commissioner Committee reports. Hearing none, there's a motion to adjourn.
Some of here.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, we're adjourned.
Party's over.
Never thought about that way, I guess.